I am Erica Rains. I am the principal of Somerset Academy Bethany and a handful of the other Somerset in the area. Ms. Hernandez is with us tonight. Ms. Hernandez, number one. She is the vice principal of Somerset Academy Bethany. We are going to do a town hall orientation. It seems when we do it this way, it seems to be a little bit more organized and flow a little bit easier for tomorrow for the Meet the Teacher that's scheduled tomorrow. That schedule has been posted and blasted out and is on the website. I believe it's also on the school's calendar. So that that information is out there if you're unsure of your time. All families should have received a phone call at this point from their classroom teachers. The teacher said they were about done with it. I think there were just a couple today. If you have questions as we go, you can feel free to put them in the chat and we will review questions after or as we go depending on what it is. Okay. So want to say welcome to all families and welcome back to our returning families. For those of you who are unaware or who don't have experience with charter schools, if you guys are new, charter schools are by definition, they are tuition free, not-for-profit public schools, meaning we do receive public funds. You do not pay tuition. We are considered a public school. We do have, we're sponsored by the district, which means that they are the ones who are responsible for making sure that we are in all state and federal compliance. We do have to do the state standardized testing. We do not have to do the district benchmark testing that they do every couple of weeks. We don't follow the district's pacing, scope and sequence. We have that curricular autonomy. So that's not something we have to, their scope and sequence pacing guide is not something we have to adhere to. We are able to choose our curriculum and our teachers are able to teach the way that they see fit in their classrooms. That that curricular autonomy piece is in exchange for a higher level of accountability. So we are held to a higher level of accountability. And what that means is that if we are poor performing for three years in a row, we can be shut down. If we are poorly performing as far as finances go, if we're in a state of financial emergency, if we don't have our two and a half percent surplus at the end of a year. If at any point during the year, there is financial concern where we're concerned, we can be shut down. So that that accountability piece is in exchange for the curricular autonomy piece. That being said, our teachers do have to be certified teachers. We, just like every other school, if we're struggling to find teachers, we do have subs also, but it is clear that there are subs. For the, for funding, so if we are, one of the things to note is that we do less funding than the, than the district does. We do receive our funding from the feds. They give it to the state, state gives it to the district, district disperses it to us. The district actually takes a five percent administration fee off the top, and that's just payment for letting us exist. And then while we do now actually receive the referendum that that passed recently. So your teachers, the teachers of your students actually are getting a referendum match now and some of that, that tax revenue, which before we weren't getting. So we do function about seventy-five to eighty percent of what the district schools function at. We rely heavily on grants, the majority of all the state grants that, that we had since COVID actually end now. They're, they've either ended last month, this month, or by September first. So all that money is, is gone. So we are back to the way we were pre-COVID. So that when you see requests from the teachers for donations, it, part of it is an opportunity for you to get involved and for you to earn your volunteer hours. And part of it is because of the, the teachers having to get creative with how they do certain things in their classrooms. So the exciting news, super, super exciting. We are in a school now. The, the first two school years we were open, we were C. You know, the first year, it's, that's typical when you first open, being a C school is normal for a charter school. And then the second year, we were, not the first year, the first year we had a letter grade. And the second year that we had a letter grade was, was last year when we were split campuses. So those of you who are returning families, I'm sure remember having the satellite campus and the, the main campus and how crazy stressful that was and how hard that was to manage. And that was, that, that full year was the year that we made the very low C, as is evident here on this chart. So this year, we, this year we made the A. We didn't just make the A, but we were three points into the A. So our teachers worked really, really hard. So I think some of the differences this year, we did departmentalize all the way down to Kinder. So we made use of our teachers' strengths in there. You know, the teachers were really good at, at math and science. That's what they're teaching. The teachers are really good at, you know, reading and writing. That's what they're teaching. So departmentalizing all the way down, I think definitely helped. And then grouping our kids by ability, I think that that definitely helped. And then of course, your teachers just worked their behinds off. We did tutoring and a lot of other stuff that, you know, we'll kind of hit some of that for this upcoming school year too. But one of the things that I want you to notice on this chart that's on the screen in front of you, it is not every single school in the county. It's only K-5 schools. So comparing a K-5 school to a K-8 school is, it's not apples to apples because eighth grade has the eighth grade science test and seventh grade has the seventh grade civics test. And then there's other components that a K-8 will have that a K-5 will not have. You can see right, I don't know if you can see my mouse while I'm sharing screens or not, but everything to the left of the blue line that says total points earned, those are the components at which we earn, we earn points. And those points make up our, the, the percent of total points makes up our letter grade. The two schools that are higher than us, the only other two schools that are above us, the Fairlawn and the Morningside. Fairlawn is a magnet and Morningside is a gifted school. So we actually have the K-5s, not comparing to K-8s, not comparing to, you know, straight middle schools or high schools, just the K-5s because we're a K-5. You can see that, that we are third in the district for K-5s. So congratulations to, to our students who worked really hard, our parents who were super supportive last year, and our teachers who did just an absolutely amazing job. All right, school hours. On regular school days, our hours are seven thirty to two thirty. And on early release days, we do release at twelve thirty. Aftercare starts immediately after dismissal at two thirty. And obviously on early release days, it does start at twelve thirty. Aftercare is by registration only. Those registration forms, I believe, are on our website. We have also blasted them out. They're also available for pickup in the main office. And they will be available for you tomorrow at Meet the Teacher. If you've not already registered your student for aftercare and you intend to do so. This is, this actually, I'm gonna leave this here for a second. If you want to take a, a picture of this. The top left corner is the QR code to access our school's Facebook page. You do not have to have a Facebook account to access it. This is where we put all the information that you need, reminders, things like that, as well as pictures and picture albums are there if you want to see what your students are learning and what they're doing in, in school. This is, is a great place to look for it. Top right corner is the website. If you are not wanting to go to Facebook to take a look, you can look there because I believe that the Facebook page actually syncs with the website as far as like pictures and announcements. It's on the main link. And like in the middle, I believe. On the bottom right is our YouTube page and that is like these videos, the, the the town hall meetings that we do, the parent universities that we do, student performances, things like that, go on the school's YouTube page. So that is there. If you want to take a look at that, you may even want to take a look at some of the older ones from years past to kind of help acclimate you to the campus if you are new to us. And then the bottom left corner is the most important one, that is the text. So if you are not already receiving the text blast, when you received your acceptance package from your Ms. Tavares, the enrollment officer, in, in her welcome package was all of this information, including information about the text blast. So if you have the remind app, you can use the remind app to message at SOM Bethany, SOM Bethany. Or you can use your regular texting and send a text to eight one zero one zero with a message at, at SOM Bethany. It'll bounce back. Ask if you're a parent or a student or whatever. That is the way to sign up for, to stay in the loop for all the information that's running out. Your teachers are going to have their own teacher team text blast signup also. So the information is not necessarily the same. So we ask, you know, we, we have some parents who in the past have signed up for their teachers and they're upset when they don't get information that goes out schoolwide, or they sign up for, you know, the schoolwide one and they are upset that they don't know what's going on in their own student's classroom because they're not signed up for the teacher. So you do need to make sure that you are signed up for both the school-wide blast as well as the teacher, teaching team blast. And you will get those tomorrow at open house at Meet the Teacher if you haven't already gotten them. Somerset Academy Bethany is a nut-free, fish-free, shell, shelf, nut-free, fish-free, shellfish-free school. I'm sorry. We have a lot of students who are severely allergic, anaphylactically so, to certain nuts. And we have a couple of teachers who are allergic to fish and shellfish, fish and shellfish. So we do ask if you are packing lunch for your students that you not pack anything with, with nuts or shellfish. Arrival and dismissal procedures, parents, please, 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 if you are new to us, please pay attention to this part. It will make Monday so much easier. We have two entrances on our campus and if you are coming in the wrong way, there's gonna be a head-on collision. And, and not following arrival and dismissal procedures is just going to slow things down. So drop off in the morning. If you're, if you are dropping your student off, drop off begins at seven. You guys are going to, and I'll show you a map in just a second. You guys are going to enter campus from utility and exit on Bethany. Actually, let me go ahead and go for it and then I'll come backwards in a second, right there. Okay. So, okay, this is the main building. This is building five. And this is the driveway that separates building one, two, and three from building five. So when you come down Bethany from St. Lissy West Boulevard, you're going to turn right onto utility. And then you're going to turn left into our parking lot. You'll notice the two arrows entering. It's because we double stack. All right, that's wide enough for double stacking. So you'll enter off utility and then you'll head down the long driveway. You'll go around that curb at the end and then in front of building five. When you get to that little, I think there's a little stop sign right there, you're gonna turn right like you're going back towards Bethany Drive. Then you're gonna stop right there in front of building five. There is a door, you'll see your car facing Bethany Drive. On your right is going to be a set of double doors to go into building five. And on your left will be the side of building three and a sidewalk. So there will be employees lined up on both sides of that driveway and they will be unloading your students from the car at car line every day. And then once your student is unloaded, they'll wave you on and you can continue to go. So if you get there before car line unloading starts, you're either before seven, you're just gonna park right there until we, until we unload your student. So going back to that. So it drops off at, drop off starts at seven AM. Our buses come through a few minutes before that, but the, so if you see the buses pulling in, please get over. Don't block the buses. And don't cut through the center of the parking lot. There should be cones there and usually there's a teacher there waving you forward anyway. When you get into car line, if you, if we are not there yet, if you get there a few minutes before seven and we're not ready to unload yet, you may not just open the door and kick your kid out and leave your kid on campus. Do not leave your student unattended on campus until there is an adult who unloads your student. Please do not get out of your car. Please allow us to open the door and to get your student out. For all the Kinder parents who ask, can we walk our babies in? You cannot, because that is a security issue. I know that there are schools that allow it. Unfortunately, you do not. If we were to allow every single parent to walk their child into the school, besides the crowd and the chaos that would create, we have no way of checking and clearing every single parent and we don't know what parents or what people are actually parents or if somebody's, you know, been convicted of something or whatever, and you don't want strangers around your child. So we ask you to remain in your vehicle. You will not be able to walk your children to school or to class on the first day of school. So we will come up and we will get your children out of the car and they get where they need to be. Car line does end at seven twenty-eight. School starts seven thirty. And by school starts at seven thirty, what that means is instruction starts at seven thirty. Not your student needs to be walking in the door at seven thirty. If they are not in their classrooms, in their seats, ready to learn at seven thirty, they are tardy. So the teachers will at exactly seven thirty, they're, the teachers will mark them tardy at that point. So if you are not unloaded by seven twenty-eight, car line ends and my teachers have to go in because my teachers have to be inside teaching by seven thirty. So they leave car line to go inside to start instruction. So at seven twenty-eight, car line is over. So if you pull in after that, you're going to be told you have to park and walk your student in and check them in. And I know that may be inconvenient. So if you get there on time, then that's not something you have to, to be concerned about. Again, you have from seven to seven thirty to drop your students off. And breakfast is served between seven and seven twenty or seven twenty-five in the cafeteria. So drop your kids off early. They can have some breakfast, get to class on time and not be stressed about running late. In the afternoon, our car line, our parents start getting in car line at two, okay, let me rephrase that. Our parents are supposed to start getting in car line at two o'clock. I always inevitably have a couple of parents who show up at twelve o'clock to get in car light. I'm not sure why. But it always happens. If you are in car line before two o'clock, you will be asked to move on, circle back around, but, but car line itself, you cannot start blocking lanes of traffic on campus until two o'clock. So if you're going to pick your child up early, it does need to be before two o'clock. Students are not going to be released after two o'clock because at two o'clock, you're allowed to start stacking for car line. And if I have two lanes of traffic all the way through the parking lot, there's no way for you to get out of the parking lot. So if you are picking up early, you do need to do that before two o'clock. And, and again, don't get in car line until two o'clock. If you are coming through car line to pick up your students, you must have your car's ID, your ID tag that you'll be getting tomorrow night from, or tomorrow, not tomorrow night, tomorrow during the Meet the Teachers, you, you will have a car tag. It will have the Somerset crest on it. It is a specific color every single year. It will have your student's name on it and grade level on it. If you want to write on it your afternoon teacher's name, because remember every student has two teachers, but if you want to write down the afternoon teacher's name on welcome to, that that car tag must be in your window coming through car line. We will not release a student to you if you do not have your car tag in the window of your car, the windshield of your car. Those of you who, you know, put it out of your window, trying to help, thank you. We appreciate it. But we look in your windshield, so please leave it in your windshield. If you have super tinted windows, then, then we will need you to kind of hold it up for us. If you're one of those super giant trucks and we aren't tall enough, we, by, by, by we, I mean me, not tall enough to see, we, we will ask you to, you know, kind of show it to us so that we can call your student down. If you do not have your car tag, we're gonna ask you to exit the parking lot, circle back around the park, and you'll have to enter the main office with a photo ID in order to get your, to have your student released to you. You can, if you are coming right, like right at the end of car line, if we've already stopped car line in the afternoon, you can use your car tag as your ID because you're, you are the only person with your car tag. So every family gets two car tags if you need more than that because you're, you're gonna have your grandparents, aunts, uncles, whatever, come pick your students up. You can ask the office for extra copies, but copies of the car tags will only be given to the parent of the student. So who you give it to after that is up to you. And that possession of the car tag will allow us to release the students to you. All right, again, this is the, the drop off and the pattern of traffic for pickup is the same. You will come down Bethany, you will turn right on utility, you will enter the parking lot, turning left into the parking lot. The difference is the afternoons, we're right here where, where the arrows end right to the right of the red X, there's going to be cones set up there and a stop sign set up there. And you will stop here in the afternoons. You're gonna double stack and you're gonna stop there in the afternoons. The small parking lot right here to the left of that big red bubble thing. I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but that parking lot right here is where my bus is staged. So my buses park here. My students leave building five and cross this walkway to load the buses, which is why all my cars must stop here. We will come out and we will move you forward to this point. Another set of cones, we'll move you forward, we'll tell you where to, to stop. And that way we're able to bring as many cars as possible in off of utility. We do ask that you, you get as close as is safely possible. Squish up as much as is possible. Don't leave, you know, ten car lengths between you because then traffic ends up out here and then we end up in trouble with the city. So if traffic is all the way back here, here to utility, this field is ours all the way to the shed. And I'm sorry, this picture doesn't show it. But there's a shed on the corner of the property over here. So all of that is ours. If we have to overflow from our parking lot in the afternoon because you guys come so early or because we're slower loading for whatever reason, we ask you to kind of go up, go up there and do like a little U-turn and park where you're on, on the grass, not on the road because you can't block, the utility company is over here. You can't block their traffic. They have to get out for emergencies. So on the grass right here, facing utility. And as the car line moves into the parking lot, you'll just pull forward out on the road and then, and then loop on into the parking lot there. So the kids again will cross here, we'll load buses. We will load this section of cars that we pull forward while we're waiting on the buses to load, especially the buses are taking a little bit of time. And then when the buses are ready to roll, we will stop traffic right here again. The buses will exit this parking lot. They will make a left-handed turn, come up to Bethany and then make a left-handed turn on Bethany and go. Once the last bus rolls, then we'll go ahead and pull these two lines forward again. Parents, car line dismissal, the first day of school is pure insanity. I am telling you now, you are being forewarned. There are no surprises. Every single year, car line at the beginning of the year is absolutely insane and it takes forever. By the fourth day of school, usually sometimes the third, but definitely by the fourth day of school, by the end of the first week, if you are following instructions, if you have your car tag every single time, if you pull forward, if you're not sleeping in car line and we have to come wake you up, if you are not on your phone, if you're paying attention and you're following instructions and you have your car tag and your students know their names and how they go home in the afternoon, then by the fourth-ish day of school, we have car line down to about twenty-five minutes. Our goal is twenty minutes. Our average is probably twenty-nine to thirty minutes. And, and we, you know, compete every day with ourselves to get better the next day safely, but still, you know, try, we, we know car lanes are pain. So be forewarned that the first day it is going to be crazy chaos and it is gonna take longer. And the, the quicker you learn the routine and the quicker your students learn the routine and their names, the quicker car line goes. All right, again, dismissal begins at two thirty, display your car tag and we're following the same traffic pattern. School bus. I mentioned the school buses. We do offer transportation. Please note, transportate, charter schools are not by law required to provide busing. It is a courtesy that we provide. This Bethany campus shares buses with the college prep campus. We, I have fourteen or fifteen buses, I think, and I think I have four-ish ready for Bethany. But we, we share buses. So Bethany school buses come to Bethany, they pick up the children in the afternoon. They take them home, they drop them off, and then they rush over to college prep to pick up my college prep kids who are dismissing about the same time that our buses are getting back from taking our Bethany kids home. In the mornings, our buses go through, they pick up our Bethany kids, come to Bethany, drop them off, and then they take off and start picking up my college prep kids. If the afternoon, excuse me, I'm sorry, in the afternoons, if if the students, if the buses are late getting out of Bethany, if the, because we're having to look for a student or something, or if the buses are late getting their students dropped, Bethany students dropped off, then those buses are late getting to college prep, which then makes college prep kids late getting home. So it has a domino effect. We do ask for our K-two parents, our K-two students, they must have an adult at the bus stop. If they do not, if the bus driver pulls up to the bus stop and there is not a parent there and the child is in Kinder or first or second grade, or even third grade and they're uncomfortable. If there is not an adult there, my drivers by law cannot leave those children at that stop, which means those drivers then bring those children back to school and then we call you and you have to come pick them up. But when that happens, when those drivers have to come all the way back to Bethany and drop a student off at Bethany before going and starting their college prep route, that makes them late and that's not fair to the college prep kids or those families. When you, you will get, if you have not already gotten your bus stop information, you will get it tomorrow night, tomorrow, not tomorrow night, tomorrow during Meet the Teacher. There are, Ms. Hernan, Ms. P. Hernandez has made these really cute little bus cards for you. They are in your folders. So you'll have that. We will also have a transportation table set up tomorrow in the multi, in the cafeteria, building five, for you to ask questions. Note that I've mentioned before that our, that transportation is a courtesy. It is not, we are not legally obligated to provide it. It is a courtesy and we do so at a financial deficit. Those, and why? The other, you know, district schools, they bus colored zones. My buses go all the way up to Indriyo, all the way down to Becker, all the way out to US One and all the way up to golf course in the other direction. And that, that means that your bus stop may not be a convenient stop. They're what we call depot stops. It may not be home, but it may be like three miles, which is too far for your kid to walk, but you may live ten miles from home. So it's still closer to So those are some things to keep in mind with regards to transportation. If you are a returning family, you did not need to resubmit a transportation request. It was automatic. If you are a new family, there was a transportation request link in your acceptance package and on the school's website. You can also email the transportation department at transportation@sumersetcollegeprep.org if you have any questions. Uh okay, um so I mentioned the adults at the bus stops for the. Um the, so we do have, we do have rules for the bus, your students cannot be out of their seats. They do have to be sitting down, my buses do have cameras on them and my buses do have seat belts. Now with regards to seat belts, it is, I I have the seat belts on the bus, you could tell your child to put their seat belts on. It is not legal for me or my bus drivers to mandate your children wear the their seat belts. So we can't make them wear it, you can make them wear it, you're the parent, you can make them wear it. Uh but I cannot make your students um wear, wear their seat belts. So um that's that's something to keep in mind now, because they don't have their seat belts on, they are. They they are inclined, especially if they're wiggly, uh to get out of their seats, getting out of their seat. Is a rule violation on the school bus, cannot get out of your seat on the school bus. There's also a volume level that they have to maintain on the school bus. If they are being too loud, if they're screaming, um if they're if they're being rambunctious. Then the bus driver has to check on them, he has, he or she has to look in that rearview mirror and if they're. Looking in the rearview mirror, trying to figure out what the screaming is, then they're not looking at the road and that endangers everybody on the bus and everybody else on the road. Um so if students are violating best rules, um a third violate, they will be warned, you will be told. A third violation of those sorts will result in the loss of best privileges, they can be suspended off the best. Again, busing is not a right, it's a privilege, um so they. And it off the best and you will have to bring your student to school for however many days they're suspended for the best. Also, one of the big rules for the best is no eating on the best. Um we had a problem last year with students eating on the bus, leaving food on the bus and the bus got bugs and that um that uh. Extermination bill was quite costly and it took quite a few treatments. So no food on the bus at all, that will result in an immediate detention or suspension from the best. Uh so regular violations um. Are IT, can you disable other people's uh access to the annotation on the screen, please? And somebody coloring in green scribbling on the screen. And so so they do result in uh. Let's just, okay. Okay, um. If we erase the green marks on screen, uh wristbands, Ms. Hernandez, uh the vice principal, Ms. Hernandez. Has made sure that all of your teachers have the color-coded wristbands. Uh in their classrooms and you guys will get them tomorrow at uh meet the teacher. Um the wristbands will have the student's first and last name on it and the teacher's name on it. Uh if they're a bus rider, they will have the bus number written on it. If your student comes, if your student is a car rider, their wristband will be green. If they're a bus rider, it will be yellow and if they are aftercare, it will be red. So we've got the green for go, the yellow for buses and red for stop or stay, keeping them at school. That's the the aftercare, so your teachers need to know how your children are getting home. That is imperative, how they're getting home the first day, when your teachers made their phone calls. Their introduction phone calls to you guys to introduce themselves, that should have been a question they asked you, how is your student getting home the first couple of days of school? Now, we know from experience that a lot of you will ask for the buses, want them on the buses, but for the first couple of days. It's the first couple of days, so you want to bring your kid, you want to pick your kid up. We understand that, we know that happens, but you must, 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 must communicate with us, because if they are on our bus list. Then we put them on the bus. So if you put them on the bus, if you put them on the bus list, if you ask for transportation and they've been assigned to a bus. Then on day one, we're gonna put them on the bus. And what ends up happening is if you don't tell your teacher or the school that uh. Yes, my kids assigned the bus, but on day one, I'm gonna pick them up in the afternoon because it's the first day. If you don't communicate that to us, they get put on the bus, they go for a ride around the county while you're sitting in car line saying, where's my kid? And we're like, um riding around the county somewhere. Um so that has happened, that has happened a number of times. Uh so that is something, please, 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 please make sure you are communicating with your teachers. Also, for the first couple, for the first couple of days of school, for the first week of school, please don't take that wristband off your students. We need that every day, so they're gonna have one around their wrist and they're gonna have one on their backpack, the little hook that's at the top of their backpack. So we're gonna have it on them in two places. Um but if you're, if something happens and you're, your student loses it or falls off or they, something happened and you had to cut it off for some strange reason. Um then when you drop your kid off the next morning, please tell whoever unloads your student. That, hey, my kid lost their their wristband or needs a new wristband for today and this is how they're going home, so that we can come communicate that. To their classroom teacher and make that happen immediately, because when kids don't have it and we don't notice if they don't have it until the end of the day. Then it slows dismissal down, which slows us getting your kids, it slows you getting through the parking lot, us getting your kids too. Kids getting on buses and buses getting out of the parking lot, so again, domino effect. So those wristbands that you're gonna have tomorrow from your um meet and greet, please, please, please make sure. That your students have those on and for the first week of school, we're until we first maybe two weeks of school. Until we know your kids and we know you and we know your cars and and what your routines are. And remember, we're we're going from like three hundred and fifty or like almost four hundred to almost six hundred students this year. So there's a lot more for us to learn. Um so until that happens, we need you to be patient with us and we need you to communicate with us and tell us. And I know some of you have, there are some days you're gonna be picked up, there are some days you're gonna ride the bus and there are some days you're gonna be aftercare. So you just, you have to communicate that, you have to communicate it daily, both to to your teachers as well as to the school. For parents who are in car line, smoking or vaping on campus um is actually illegal uh and will result in citations. So if you are a smoker, um do that before you get onto the campus, if you are sitting in your car on campus, smoking or vaping. Um we will be following at minimum the St. Lucy County School Board policy, uh which does, it 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 does result. Citation, so that is something to um to keep in mind, please. Field trips, so. I'm sorry, I feel like I've been talking nonstop. Um Ms. Hern, here, wanna unmute and take over for a minute and give my voice a break, I wouldn't mind. And crickets, okay. Um field trips, we go on a lot of them. Um in the past, we have uh had a different color field trip shirt for every grade level. Um and the shirts have been grade specific, this year uh we decided to let Ivy Lee make them for us, the, our uniform company make them for us. So we went with one red um, one red um. Oh, IT, Ms. Hernandez can't unmute herself, so she is muted by you guys, can you guys help her unmute? That's why she didn't say anything.
Hi, yeah, sorry, I couldn't unmute. Um where did you leave off, field trip shirts?
And field trip shirts, go ahead.
Okay, so field trip shirts, um I was not a huge fan of last year's process. So therefore this year, we went ahead and did a field trip shirt through Ivy Lee, which parents can um purchase as many as they want to purchase, as often as they need to purchase them if their child. Lost theirs or um they outgrew it, parents who are coming mid-year now have the option of buying it at that point in time as well. And it's handled all through Ivy Lee, so it no longer has to be a um a purchase through the school and then, you know, have to hand it out. Um chaperones, if you are interested in chaperoning field trips, please go ahead and email Ms. Rosenfeld, I will drop her email. In the chat, she will go ahead and email you back with an application and um you guys will fill it out and we'll get you guys set up for that. Uh for field trip payments, those are all online, so you are able to pay for field trips online on our school store, so when they open up. You guys are able to um pay for those and then the, sorry, my children in the back, um for eligibility. Students are eligible for field trips as long as they're not on behavioral probation, um which we'll cover later on in the slides.
Uh you mentioned the application for chaperoning, uh there's, I didn't hear you say um that they also have to be. Level two background checked and cleared and drug tested as well to be able to to chaperon.
Yes, correct, they would have to go through clearance through St. Lucy County, so that includes a background check and a drug test.
Okay, Ms. Hernandez, go ahead.
Alright, so attendance um is a big one, sorry, I'm trying to go through the chat and answer some of those questions also. Um attendance is a big one, I know that we go from having preschool babies to all of a sudden having um elementary age children. And um we think attendance is a little different, however, the state of Florida does mandate how many um instructional hours a student gets per grade level. So for example, kinder through third, they must meet a seven hundred and twenty-hour minimum of instructional hours to be promoted. For grades four through seven, it would be nine hundred hours. Um the school is required to also send out truancy letters, so if you get a truancy letter. It is not us picking on your family or your student, we understand sometimes there are emergencies that happen and students have to be out of school for a longer period of time. Um but we do have to send out those letters, it it is not us, you know, trying to say anything bad about your family or your student or that you don't care enough to send them to school. It it is a mandatory thing we have to do. Um program contract violation, when you guys uh registered for our school, you. Signed off and said that you would have your students attend our school on a regular basis um and not exceed more than ten absences that were unexcused. Um and then we have excused or unexcused absences, so excuse is a um doctor's note absence, if there is a funeral, anything like that. Please communicate that with us, we are more than welcome, are more than happy to excuse those. Unexcused absences are if they don't bring in a doctor's note. Makeup work, if your absence is excused, your teachers will are required to provide that makeup work. If your absence is unexcused, the teacher can choose to provide the makeup work, but they're not required to.
Okay, I'll cover this one. Um so there has been a change in statute, so. With the, and I'm sure you guys have all heard about it, the um I think it's their nicknamed the Parents Rights Bill. Um the, a couple of years ago, students were able to say, you know, Johnny could say, my name is is Bob and. We had to by law call Johnny Bob if that's what he said he wanted to be called. Um we had to, and this doesn't apply as much at the elementary, but just so that you have the information. Um a couple of years ago, the law was if a a biological boy came to school and said he was, he was a girl. We had to adhere to the student's wishes of pronouns and such. Um and we by law were prohibited from telling the parent. Uh what the student wanted or said or preferences were. Um with the new law, with the Parents Rights Law, uh we actually, that is completely backwards, completely opposite now. Um we are not allowed to, we we, if Jonathan's name is Jonathan, we are not allowed to call Jonathan Johnny. Uh much less Bob or Mary or anything else, we have to use the given name on the birth certificate. Um the name that is in Skyward is the name that we have to use. So if your child's name is is Alexandria and she goes by Alexis or Ellie or what have you. We're not allowed to use that nickname unless we have in writing from the parent. Permission to to use that nickname. So um that's something, there's actually a form, it's not just like an email, there's actually a form for it. Uh I will, if it's not already available in the main office or on our website, um I will make sure that happens in the next day or two. Um that that is, we, i- if you, if your student goes by a name other than their name in Skyward. We must, and you want us to call your student by whatever nickname, um we must. Have that form filled out and on file, otherwise we're not allowed to do that. Um that being said, kind of, kind of on the same thing, talking about names for a second. By kinder parents, kinder and first grade parents. Um I I know that this sounds ridiculous, but please know that. A lot of your babies don't know their names. They, we we have every year where we will ask a kinder baby what their name is. Because they've taken their bracelet, their their wristband off or what, they've taken their name tag off, we will ask the child what their name is and we will get a blank stare. Or we'll ask what their name is and they'll say their name is baby, because baby is what their mommy calls them. Or sweetheart or something like that, so and that's, that's not their name, or they'll give us a nickname that you call them at home. But we have no idea what their actual name is. So you can help us make sure that your children are safe and where they need to be by. By making sure they know their first and last name. They need to know their first and last name, their actual first and last name, that is huge. Um and if there's any way possible, you can make sure they know that by Monday, that's even better. Uh we do have, you know, some parents every year who take it upon themselves to put a name tag, a hi, my name is. And my grade level is and my teacher is and my mommy's name is sticker on your student. That is incredibly helpful when they get out of the car wearing those stickers, like that is just absolutely awesome. And those parents, like kudos to you, thank you, you make our lives easier. Um and and we don't expect, we don't, we don't mandate it, we don't expect it, but that is like absolutely awesome when you guys choose to do that, especially for our kinder babies. Um now for our kinder kids who were our preschool kids last year, um we, you know, we obviously have more familiarity with them. But if you are completely and totally new to us, uh that that kind of information is important. Okay, um Ms. Hernandez, you wanna take over again?
Yes, okay, so Skyward is the platform we use for attendance, for posting grades, for test scores, everything. Uh that has to do with academics and any legal binding attendance. Uh for your new parents and returning parents, all of your information has been reset. Ms. Messina is our data specialist, her email is at the bottom of the slide. If you cannot get in based on the information on this slide, please go ahead and send her an email. But she did start sending out emails through Skyward um to parents yesterday, I believe.
Go ahead.
Alright, progress reports are posted every other week in Skyward. We, when we were very, very small, we used to send a paper copy home, we have gone a lot larger. Um so they get posted automatically every two weeks in Skyward. If you have a teacher who you notice is not um posting grades, has not been updating their grades. And it's been two weeks, please send me an email, I will go ahead and look into it and see what's going on. Uh report cards also get posted in Skyward, we do try to send a reminder. Um last saying, hey, report cards got posted today or hey, progress reports got posted today, but every two weeks you guys should be seeing a new progress report. Uh teachers are required to update their grades the first and the fifteenth of every month. Like I said, if you notice that that's not happening in the classroom, please email me, I'd rather know than be surprised later.
That's still you.
Yes, this one's me, I was very, very excited when I found this out yesterday, apparently it's a little bit of older news and I did not know. But through Skyward, kinder through fifth grade parents can access their students' state test scores. Um if at the top right, because I don't know if you guys can see my mouse, but at the top right where it says district links, when you're in Skyward on your home front page, you can click on district links. And that will launch you to the test scores um for your student. So you can see last year's scores, you can see current year's scores as they come in um in real time, so that's very exciting.
Okay, ready to go? Go ahead.
Alright, dress code, um school sanctioned shirts, outerwear, that's purchased through Ivy Lee, it has the school logo on there. We are on an open campus, we need to make sure we can identify the students, our school has a dress code policy. Your bottoms um can be skirts, can be shorts, can be pants, they must be khaki or black. Um there are some skirts available through Ivy Lee for uh students who choose to wear them, they are plaid. That is fine, as long as you can purchase them through Ivy Lee. Um we do not permit leggings or uh holes in your jeans, no rips, frays and no sweatpants. Um for shoes, I don't care the color, um I just want to make sure they're close to, the students go to PE every day for thirty minutes. So they need to have a shoe that they can run around and and you know, exercise in. As a parent, I don't. As a parent, I don't recommend sending the nicest shoe that you don't want your student to mess up just because they're going to be in a playground that has mulch. They're going to be on the grass. Um, but you guys can do what you want with your shoes. My son will come to school and his shoes will be completely destroyed after a week. Um, just dirty and raggedy looking. So it's up to you guys, but closed toed shoes so they're safe. Um, no crocs and no shoes with wheels, please.
And for parent drop off, please know that the, because what has happened in the past is the uh, teachers that are in car line unloading your kids, um, have unloaded your kids, sent them inside and then the teacher send them down down to the office for dress code violation. You get a phone call, you need to turn around, come back. Um, so the teachers were told today in our meeting that this year, they need to tell you in car line. They're not allowed to unload your student from the car if your student is not in dress code. So if your student is out of dress code, they're going to politely tell you that, that they're not allowed to, and they, they're going to blame me. Ms. Rain said, I'm not allowed to um, unload the kids if they're not in dress code. So please take your student, go home, get them a dress code, bring them back. Alright, so please expect that, um, as opposed to, you know, getting unloaded and turning around, having to come back and deal with it later. Is P Hernandez on? Hernandez is number two?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you want to take this one? So ladies and gentlemen, um, Mr. O, those of you who knew him moved down, uh, further south. Um, so he unfortunately is not with us this year. We will miss him. Um, but they, they moved. So uh, Ms. P Hernandez, as some of you may know, if you are familiar with, uh, if you, if you're a returning family, uh, you saw her around Bethany last year overseeing ESC and ESOL. Um, and if you have kids over at college prep, you saw her over here also. So she has been transferred full time to the Bethany campus in an administrative capacity and she will be helping, um, with discipline this year. Ms. Hernandez?
Alright, so for minor in-class behaviors, they will be redirected by the teachers. Um, and we already have spoken to the teachers and we want to ensure there's continuous communications, um, between the parents and the teachers. Um, if behaviors continue, consequences may, um, will range from time with the dean to lunch detention to either after-school detention. More significant or repetitive behaviors, um, that impact students and staff as well as the safety and well-being of others can result in serious consequences such as after-school detentions or suspension. Um, if your child have continuing, continues to, um, be in, use unsafe behaviors, parents are contacted by the dean or administrator for communication and the result of consequences. So any behavior discipline issues, we are going to be communicating with the parents. Um, first, we'll try to get the teachers to contact the parents, reach out to you guys, let you know what's happening in the classroom for more serious discipline issues, then you'll be reached out by me or Mrs. Hernandez or Ms. Raines. Um, please refer to the handbook with details about the progressive consequences. Um, and student referral may result in behavior probation and then violation of that behavior probation can cause dismissal.
You want to do this one?
Alright, rest, huh? Yes?
One of the Hernandez's?
Alright, so restroom and, um, lunchroom policies. So students are in, if they're released from class, they have to have their hall pass. Just stating where they're going. If they're going to a clinic, they'll have a clinic pass. If they're going to the restroom, they'll have a restroom pass. And they also have to sign in and out of their classes just so that we can track the time that they have spent out the classroom and ensure their safety and, and their return back to class safely. If for whatever reason, the teachers find that the students are taking longer than usual, then they'll contact someone in the office or the front desk just to double check and check up on your students. Um, vandalism. So we did, there was a few problems at the Bethany campus last year of, um, students writing on walls, throwing toilet paper around the classroom. That is not a, a permitted behavior and they will be resolved in consequences. Um, lunch lines and lunch numbers. Your students are going to be provided with their lunch numbers. Every time they go into the cafeteria, they will have to punch in those lunch numbers in order to, um, get their food. Um, cleanup and volunteers, Mrs. Hernandez?
Um, volunteers, it would be the same process as far as getting, you know, filling out your application, being cleared and approved to be around the students, uh, cleanup, same thing. We do promote, you know, having the students clean their own tables, having them pick up their own trash, clean up after yourselves. Um, but having parents there also helps just being an extra set of hands, extra set of eyes, um, helping them open and clean up their spaces.
Um, with regards to lunch lines and lunch numbers, uh, the, the cafeteria staff are not employees of the school. They're employees of the school district. We contract with them. They have their own set of rules, their own set of policies that, that they go by and we're just there to enforce it. One of those is that the children have to punch in their own lunch number. We are not allowed to do it for them, even though it would be so much faster. Um, the kids have to punch in their own lunch number on that little device, which means that they have to know their lunch number. For kinders, that's really, 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 really hard. So all of the teachers have the, um, have the, their, the students' lunch numbers in their classroom, um, and they will be teaching that to them. Some years, uh, some of the teachers, you put like a little clip on them, someone put them a little, um, thing around their neck, a little lanyard. Uh, some, you know, they have different ways of, of doing it, of giving it to them and trying to teach the kids. They do spend some time, especially kinder teachers, spend some time in the classroom trying to teach the kids those numbers and how to push those numbers. Um, the, we, we do ask parents if at all possible, you can help with that at home. The faster your kids learn their lunch numbers and how to punch them in, the faster the lunch lines go and then the faster lunch goes. Ms. Hernandez did add another lunch this year. I have no idea how many lunches were up to um, on the schedule, four maybe, five? I have no idea. Uh, though she added another one because of, you know, our size of, of being so big and trying to make the lunches a little bit smaller. Um, but the first couple of days, those lunch lines are absolutely crazy long. The littles are trying to learn how to walk through lunch line, how to carry their tray, how to communicate with the stranger that's standing there, telling them what they want on their tray and then how to punch in those numbers on the thing. So those are something, those are some things that you really need to keep in mind. Um, and that if whatever you can do to help teach your student at home, um, will help that go faster. Ms. Hernandez, number two.
Bullying is not permitted in our school, um, systematic and chronologically inflictions, physical hurt or psychological distress and creating imbalance of power of one or more students or employees. Bullying includes instances of cyberbullying, um, and bullying may include but not limited to repetitive instances of teasing, social exclusion, threats, intimidation, stalking, physical violence, threat, harassment, public or physical humiliation and destruction of property. Um, it is not permitted in our school. It is not permitted in any of San Lucy schools and we take bullying very, very seriously. So consequences will be applied for any students that are, um, identified in any of these behaviors. This includes text messages, um, sending, um, intimidation via phones with peers or teachers.
And then on that note, with regards to bullying, one of the things that, that while we absolutely do not tolerate it, we also need to teach the children the difference in bullying and someone not wanting to be their friend. So she gave me a dirty look is not bullying. I don't want to play with you is not bullying. We can't force the children to be friends. We can't force them to like another child. Um, bullying if they are being mean and hurtful and attempting to cause that imbalance of power, then it's bullying. Bullying by definition has to be repetitive. It has to be repetitive and it has to be targeted. So if it is not repetitive and it is not targeted and there's not a, a, there's not an imbalance of power there, then it is not bullying. It's just kids who don't like each other and they're, they're allowed to do that. They're allowed to say, I don't want you to sit next to me. I want to sit next to so-and-so. They're allowed to do that. And, and we, at some point, we want to empower our students, our children even to, to be able to self-advocate. So please make sure that your children do understand the difference and that our parents understand the difference in, in self-advocating and bullying. There's, you know, they're, they're picking on, they're making fun of, uh, if there's anything at all physical, anything physical, um, that is repetitive, those types of things. But we, we find that parents and children often use this word when it is not the correct word to describe the behavior that's happening. Hence the actual legal definition on the screen. Oh, yeah, I guess I got ahead of myself. So repeated intentional and, uh, involves a, uh, imbalance of power. So, um, that's, that's what I just said. Didn't realize it was on the next screen. Okay, when we do get reports of it, we do get reports of, of bullying or somebody, you know, hurting someone else or being mean to someone else. Um, the investigation does include the, the student who's reporting it. So when the kid doesn't report it to us and they report it to you when they get home and you email us or you call us and tell us what your student said and then you say, and I'm not bringing my kid back to school until it's dealt with. Well, it's never going to get dealt with then because we cannot deal with it until we are able to interview this student who's making the claim. So we have to interview the student making the claim. And then we have to interview any of the other students who are involved as well as any witnesses that there may have been. Uh, classroom teachers, any other staff members who may have seen or heard something. Um, we will collect all that information. If we, if it's something that wasn't just verbal, actually even if it's verbal, uh, we will pull cameras and watch cameras on it, even though our cameras, uh, pick up, don't pick up audio, we, you are often very able to read a lot in body language and facial expressions and things like that. Uh, so we, we do investigate it. Um, and then we deal with it as is needed. So if, if you're told that, you know, something didn't happen or didn't happen exactly the way that, that your student may have, uh, relayed, that rest assured that a full investigation was done prior to getting back to you. Okay, I'll do another subject. Uh, volunteer hours. Remember that student, students, parents are required to do twenty volunteer hours a year for the first student and fifteen hours a year for each subsequent student. Um, you can earn those hours by attending PTO meetings. Hopefully my PTO people are here and my IT people are ready to unmute them. Um, the, because their screen is next. So attending PTO meetings, volunteering at the school at lunch, going on field trips, things like that. Um, in October, we have our fall festival at the end of October. So for the month of October, that's a really good month to, um, accrue volunteer hours. Um, the teachers, they have candy wars and so they have boxes in their classrooms and parents come in at the beginning of, um, October, end of September and help to decorate their collection boxes. And then they, the boxes go in the classrooms and then every day, um, there are donations of candy. Uh, and then the class at the end of the month that has the most candy and it, after our parent volunteers come in and candy, uh, they, they get a, a donut or pizza or something party. Um, so there's lots of ways to get involved. Um, we always need, need volunteers. There's always different events going on. Um, and then donations, um, donating. So one of the things that you'll notice as far as supply lists go is that, that we typically try to steer away from the collective stuff, like your, your teacher's going to ask for your students to have, you know, a folder for every subject and writing utensil and paper or notebook. Um, and, and maybe crayons or colored pencils or whatever. Um, but they're not going to ask you for ten rolls of paper towels and ten bottles of sanitizer and, and fifteen boxes of Ziploc bags or whatever, like some of the schools. Um, but what we do in lieu of that is we do ask for those in donations, not as a mandatory part of your student's school supplies. The donations, if you're out grocery shopping this weekend and, or anytime through the school year, um, and you just want to throw an extra bottle of sanitizer in your cart for your classroom or an extra box of tissue, I will tell you that August through November is the absolute worst for tissues and sanitizer and Lysol wipes and spray. Um, our kids are, after they've been home and only exposed to certain germs all summer long, then they get back to school and they're exposed to each other and all these other germs. And they, like, the sickies are the worst in the first couple of months at school and then they get used to it again. Um, so donations, uh, ten dollars and attend at ten dollars. It's an hour of volunteer service for every ten dollars donated. Um, so all of that. And then the one that was the most popular last year that the kids loved, loved, loved was our guest readers. So, um, actually you don't have to be a clear to volunteer to come in as a guest reader. You can, because you're going to check into the office and be escorted and you're never going to be out of the presence of a teacher, um, or an employee. You don't actually have to be cleared for that. You just have to go through the front office though. So guest readers are, um, every week, we, our classroom teachers want, it can be a parent, it can be an aunt and uncle, grandparent. It can be just a community member, um, but invite you to come in and read to the class. And the, um, the payment for coming in and reading is you donate. So you pick the book, you get the book, you bring it in and you donate that book to the classroom, after you're done reading it to the students. And that book then becomes part of the classroom library. Um, you can go on the school's Facebook page and see lots and lots and lots of pictures of, uh, of parents coming in and being guest readers last year. And that, that's a great way to get your hours. Um, it's so exciting when, when that door opens to the classroom and the kids look up and they're not expecting their parent or their grandparent or whatever to show up to read. And it just, it makes them feel like they're just the most famous person at first. So it's awesome for the kids. Um, and hearing and seeing people read, that's one of the ways that we really pushed and promoted literacy this last year. Um, we, those of you who are with us know, you know, about the book fairs and the free books and stuff like that at the end of the year, um, last year. So literacy is huge and I think that, um, I think that our parents probably had a lot to do with us achieving that A this year, you know, coming in and reading and helping to support and push literacy through the school. Um, so yeah, so those are just a few of the many ways that you can, uh, get involved and volunteer at school. Alright, and PTO, um, IT, if you've not already done so, can you please unmute, um, Amy or Kate or Amanda? Or all of the above?
I cannot unmute them. They need to unmute themselves.
Oh, can they do that? Okay, I thought you had a lot. Okay.
Can you hear me? It's Amy.
Yes, yes.
Well, we have to, we can request that they unmute.
Okay, she's unmuted. She's good. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, perfect. Hi. Um, so just to piggyback quickly off what Mrs. Raines was saying. Um, so when you go into volunteer, there's a binder that you need to sign in to get your, uh, volunteer hours. Um, but then you can submit receipts. Let's say you put that bottle of Lysol on your auto ship every other week. Um, submit your receipts to Jessica Johnson who's down in V5. Um, but hello, um, my name's Amy. I'm the president for the PTO this year and Amanda is with us somewhere. Um, she is our treasurer. Kate is with us as well and she is our, um, vice president and we are looking for our secretary this year. Um, so I won't take too much of your time as we do have a PTO meeting set for, uh, August twenty first at six PM. That's going to be in the multipurpose room. You don't have to remember that. We will send you a flyer. Um, but scan this QR code. That will go to an online Google form that Amanda, Kate and myself have access to and will be taking interest for that secretary position. Um, that would include, uh, you know, having various sorts of availability and, um, familiarity with IT types, not IT, but, um, you know, Google forums, Google Excel, using email, things like that. We rely heavily on. We meet in, uh, as a PTO team every month and then every other month will be the PTO where we meet with the parents in either the cafeteria or the multipurpose room. So that was the gist of us taking a slide during Mrs. Raines's time, but other than that. that was the gist of us taking a slide during Mrs. Raines' time. But other than that, we will have, um, oh, I'm going to mention one more thing. Um, so this year by popular demand, we are going to do the ticket to skip it. And I'm only telling you this because we're going to start taking entries before the PTO meeting. So, um, from August twenty second to the twenty ninth, you'll be able to enter for your chance to skip car line and go right to the front for a solid month. Um, so again, you don't have to write that down. We will have flyers coming out to you guys to inform you, but I want you to have that, those dates and, um, events in mind. So other than that, we will keep you in the loop. If you guys need any, um, information, our emails are posted here. If you need information on volunteer opportunities, how you can help, you hear an events, you know, coming down the line and you want to help out with that, whether it be monetarily or with supplies, or maybe you have a friend that has a food truck or, you know, anything. Uh, feel free to reach out. We are the champions for volunteering and we can definitely help um, facilitate you getting those hours, uh, that you need for each year. That is all.
All right. Thank you very much. That, um, ticket to, or yeah, to skip it, that, that's exciting. I know parents are going to love that one.
Yes, that's a hot ticket item.
All right, um, Ms. Hernandez's number, uh, no, wait a minute, is Ms. Diaz here or Ms. Hernandez? Do you want to take this? I don't know who's taking this one.
Um, I know Ms. Diaz is, but I can. So if your student needs to receive any type of medication during school hours, there are very specific forms that we need filled out. There will be a table set up tomorrow in the cafeteria of building five, um, with a big sign that says medical forms. So if you form a line at that table, there will be somebody there to give you the appropriate form for your student's medication on campus.
Go ahead.
All right, parent teacher conferences. Um, a PTC is a parent teacher conference is when the parent meets with both of the teachers um, that instruct your student. Anyone, um, parent guardian that is on their emergency contact can request the PTC. And PTCs can be requested through the main office. There is a form in building one reception and a form in building five reception that the parent must fill out and submit to that front office staff member. And we will go ahead and call you to go ahead and schedule that. All right, progress monitoring. Um, progress monitoring, we also call PM for short, especially when we're sending our text blasts. Um, is a set of tests that we administer to students three times a year per the state, um, kinder all the way through fifth grade. The tests, um, typically take place in the fall, so August, September, um, in December, right before break. And at the end of the school year, it is the state's way, the school's way and the parents' way of tracking your student's progress academically.
And they are followed by data chats. So uh, data chats are exactly what they sound like, chats about data. So after, uh, PM one, which the first one is Ms. Hernandez, is at the end of August, yes, beginning of August, end of August, beginning of September.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so you're going to see a text blast that goes out that says, uh, it's going to be signup genius link. It says be signup for your data chats. It will be a designated period of time, a period of like days, whatever. Um, and you will have fifteen minutes. Every parent will have fifteen minutes. So they may be in person, they may be, um, on Zoom, um, but they're after every PM. And what it will consist of, i- it's not a parent teacher conference. You're not coming in to discuss, um, behavior in the classroom or to go through a student's whole portfolio. It is literally a fifteen minute data chat. Here's where your student is. Here's where your student should be. Here's how we're going to get them there. And here's what we need you to do at home to support it. And then the teacher will hand you whatever materials or resources they need to hand you for you to do your part at home. And then again, we're going to, here's where they are. Here's where they should be. And here's how we're getting them there. And, and that is to keep you apprised of their progress so that at the end of the year, you know, if your, if your student has been struggling, um, and there's recommendation for retention, that you're not surprised by that. Or at the end of the year, if your student is excelling and, and we recommend, you know, advanced classes for the next year or what have you, um, that you're not surprised by that. You, as the parent, need to always know how your student is performing. Uh, so that is, those are data chats. And again, they are after each PM. So first will be, um, coming up. Uh, it sounds like in September. Okay, um, supplies. I saw some people asking in the chat about dropping off supplies on the first day. Please do not send supplies with your child on the first day. If you send it on the bus, it's going to get left on the bus or it's going to get lost on the bus. If you tried to get it out of your car, these huge bags are as big as your children. Out of your car in the morning during car line, it, it slows car line down. Your kids can't carry it to class. And by the time car line's over, we have a pile of bags and we don't even know whose class they go to. So if you can, at all possible, drop it tomorrow when you come to meet the teacher, that is the best. Second best is bringing it to the main office with your student's name and your teacher's name on the bag. If you are able to do that, that is the, the absolute best way. So either bringing it tomorrow or bringing it to the office yourself. Um, sending it in, in, and then, and then we have the parents who, the older kids, you guys will put it in their backpacks and we won't know it's in their backpacks. And we don't unpack their backpacks for them for like, for the first week of school. And at the end of the first week, they're still carrying their supplies back and forth in their backpack. So again, if you could please, please, please either bring it tomorrow or, um, when you come, when, on, on Monday, bring it to the office. That would be super, super, super helpful. Uh, tomorrow is meet your teachers. Um, I saw in the chat that, uh, one of our wonderful parents posted the, um, schedule for that again. Um, I can see in the chat that you guys have asked about, uh, teacher phone calls because evidently I still have teachers who haven't made phone calls. Um, Ms. Hernandez has been reaching out to the teachers as you say so. And, um, the, what I'm getting from the teachers is, uh, parents, you should check your voicemails. Um, so it sounds like we've left a handful of voicemails. It sounds like also one of our teams, only one of the parents, one of the parents, one of the teachers made the calls because the other teacher was in training all day because she was newer. Uh, so there, there may have, I think that was a kinder team if I'm not mistaken. Um, so if you only got one phone call, the reason may be that the second teacher was in, was in trainings. I have been, uh, putting them through a lot this week. Um, you, uh, backpacks don't necessarily have to be brought tomorrow unless you're going to be full of stuff. Your kids should bring their backpack back and forth every day. Uh, so that they can bring work home and, and whatever, uh, lunchboxes and stuff like that to school, what have you. Um, somebody asked about absences. There is on the website, there is a link for attendance. You can upload the, um, the doctor's notes or your notes. You can upload those onto the website. And yes, your children are absolutely allowed to attend tomorrow. Uh, we want them to, to meet their teachers too. Especially, you know, if they can attend with you, then especially if they're kinder, um, that will help ease their, their stress on Monday. Aftercare, I mentioned we have aftercare. It goes from dismissal till six. Uh, the price is on the screen, registration fee is on the screen and drop in. So if you're only using it on like early release days, um, that's on the screen also. But in addition, if you're going to use the drop-in, right, you do have to have, you do have to have uh, registered and paid the registration fee. So you don't get to drop in without registration paperwork. So we have to have that for, um, in order to keep your students safe. Uh, those applications again can be found on the website. Um, they were blasted out and they are in the main office. And my guess is they're probably also, um, Hernandez, are they in the red folders for the parents tomorrow?
They are not. They are on the website. Um, and there's a table set up in building five.
Oh, that's right. I forgot we were doing an aftercare table instead of wasting the paper to stuff the folders. That's right. I forgot about that. Thank you. Okay, um, one of our teachers, uh, did this. I think she told us that she found it online if I'm not mistaken. Um, but we absolutely loved it. It was actually one of the preschool teachers, Ms. Black, um, that found this and we absolutely loved it. And I want this implemented schoolwide. Um, sometimes our kids have bad days, right? Sometimes, you know, they, they didn't get to bed on time the night before because something was going on at home. Or they were up and had nightmares and so, you know, they're really tired in the morning or something, you know, personal is going on at home with you guys. Um, and, and the kids, the kids feel that if something's up with mom and dad or there's, you know, a grandparent's sick or something, whatever it is. Um, the kids feel it and it affects them. And sometimes it affects them in a way that they are, you know, they're just quieter during the day, which, you know, isn't a big deal. But some of our kids react differently. Some of them react, you know, they act out, they act up. Um, and, and maybe that's not normal behavior for them. So if something's going on at home or they're just having a bad morning, a rough morning, you know, some, they don't want to get, we don't want to get up sometimes, right? Um, so you have a hard time getting them up and getting them dressed that morning and getting them out the door that morning. Just shoot your teacher a message on, on their remind, um, or an email. Or just when you're, if it's a car rider, when we're unloading the car and all you have to say is handle with care. That's it. You tell us to handle with care that day and we know something's up and we're going to keep an extra close eye on your baby and make sure that everything's okay. And we're going to be extra understanding. You know, if they are, i- i- if you tell us to handle with care that day and, you know, they've had a rough day and they get to school and they're acting out and they're, you know, maybe angry or whatever. Um, we will understand that it's coming from somewhere and not just, you know, obstinance or disrespect. So all you have to say is handle with care. And that's our cue that we know your baby needs a little bit of extra time or patience or help that particular day. So I loved that idea when that teacher brought it to us and I said, you know what, we're doing this schoolwide. So um, hopefully you guys can, can remember that. Okay, questions. I know there have been so many in the chat. I've been trying to keep up, um, let me just scroll real quick.
Um, we've done pretty good about answering the questions in the chat, but I did have some things I felt like we needed to clarify.
Okay.
Um, for drop off and for pickup, yes, the left lane is for kinder. Yes, the right lane is for grades three through five or sorry, first through fifth. Um, however, if that lane, when you're turning onto our driveway is shorter, you can get in the other lane. Because we do have people that work that center of the two lanes and can load your student if they're crossing over from the other side. So you want to try to go with the shortest lane.
Um, Ms. Hernandez, don't we have a couple of kinder classrooms in building five?
No, we have zero kinder classrooms in building five.
Oh, so we're down to four sections instead of six this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, cool. Okay. So that's different from last year for my returning family.
Um, one of the things I also wanted to say, I don't know if you said it, but changing lanes once they're on campus. Did you address that already?
I forgot, I forgot that. I'm sorry.
Okay, so when you guys enter pro- the property to get into car line, um, whether it's drop off or pickup, whatever lane you start with is the lane you need to see all the way through. Um, if you are trying to change lanes because you find a lane to be shorter, you could potentially be cutting off a parent coming. We've had a lot of issues with that, um, especially the first couple of days of school where parents are either hitting other parents because they're trying to jump out of the, um, line they're in and go into another lane, um, and they just, they don't see them. So whatever lane you enter on, whether it's left or right, you must see it through all the way to the end.
Okay. Did you talk about the grade level, like, um, it, which are, if they've got kids in both buildings, that the grade levels need, they need to be on the right side of their building, on the right side of the car for their building?
I'm not following.
Uh, because I'm saying right and I mean correct. If you are, if you have two children and you're pulling into the lane closest to the kinder building and you have a kinder child, that child needs to be on the side of building three in your car. If you have a third grader, then they need to be on the center lane side. If you're pulling into the right lane closest to building five and you have a kinder, please put that child on the center lane side of the car. It makes it easier for us to unload. Um, so if I said that clear as mud now, right?
Yes, um, they'll, they'll get the hang of it. Um, one other thing, Raines, you said transportation. Returning students did not have to fill out a request. That was different than what was told to me. So can you please clarify?
Uh, yeah, Ms. Vicki is the head of transportation department. Every time I've asked about, because I, whenever parents ask me, I just screenshot it to her. She says that it's automatic, um, that their, their transportation was automatic. They didn't have to reapply. Um, that new families needed to apply. What I've been telling families that have been posting and, and messaging, um, I've been telling them that they, that if they were concerned, they could send an email to transportation at numbers at college prep.org. Um, or talk to Ms. Pat or Ms. Irene tomorrow at the transportation table, um, that if they are returning, it should have been automatic.
Perfect.
And if, even if it wasn't, the Bethany buses are not as full. Um, college prep buses are right listed. Bethany buses are not full. So even, even if they, a new family that didn't get their paperwork in or whatever, um, they should still be able to take care of it tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, some of the parents are asking about how they, um, how they, uh, hold on, it, every time they send a message, it, it jumps on my screen. Give me a second. No, if your child is bringing their lunch, they don't have to punch in a lunch number. Um, I'm scrolling. No, okay, this was a question, uh, about riding the buses. So it says if your child has, if you have a child who attends Bethany and one who attends college prep, and it just appeared off the screen because somebody sent a message. I think it asked if the Bethany kids and college prep kids could ride together. The answer is no, because college prep gets out, um, at three forty-five and Bethany gets out at two thirty. So they, they can't ride together because they're not, um, they're not dismissing at the same time. Are there any other questions on there? Oh, I just saw something about food allergy and then it disappeared off the screen. Y'all send the messages and they knew that I missed them. Uh, Hernandez, did you see something about food allergies there?
Um, there was a question. I had the parent privately email me.
Okay, I see it is. Um, so for cafeteria, they actually do, you have to, so when you guys are doing your pupil ID that was part of your acceptance package, um, and then returning families, every year you have to do a new pupil ID. There's a question about allergies on that. So when, you need to make sure it's on there. When we put those allergies into Skyward, that the di- district has access to Skyward. And that's part of why they punch in their lunch numbers. When the student punches in their lunch number, it brings their profile up on the screen in front of the lunch ladies, the cafeteria ladies. Um, and they see that flag in the top right corner of the screen that, um, that says that there's a food allergy and they're able to, to make sure that your kids are safe. So you have to make sure food allergies are on the pupil I, pupil ID form. Yes, you can make a payment in the office for aftercare. Um, you can, uh, cash check, uh, money order in the office, uh, if you are not able to get into the school store because your student has, doesn't have a five, six number yet. Um, kinder families, kinder parents, if you are, um, if you have applied like in the last, I don't know, thirty days or so, uh, you may not be in our system yet. We don't add, so when, when families apply to us, we don't add you to our Skyward. We have to ask the district to give your student to us. The district student assignment office has to assign your student to us. So if the district has not assigned you to us, then we don't have access to you, your Skyward, it, you're not in our Skyward. Can't build your schedule, can't access your lunch number or anything like that. Um, and that's not, that's something that we go through every year. And the later that you apply with us, um, the, the longer into the school year it takes to get you assigned to us. Uh, yes, Ms. Robin said that breakfast was free again this year. There is no charge for breakfast in the cafeteria this year. Um, and I don't remember what the prices of lunch was. Um, I do know that you can charge up to a certain dollar amount uh, in the cafeteria if your student does forget their lunchbox. If they don't, um, if they forget their money and their lunch. Okay. Um, is that everything in there? Dress dance. So for new families, uh, we do have dress dance on Fridays. Um, we do have dress dance on Fridays and on early release days is a dress down. Uh, dress down at the elementary campus is a dollar. Um, and just so that you know, that money goes directly back into the students' accounts. So, um, every month, a different grade level um, is responsible for that dress down money. So like, I, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but for example, uh, kinder gets August and first uh, kinder gets August and first grade gets September. And so the money that is, is uh, raised from the dress down, which is a fundraiser, those funds go back into those teachers' accounts and students' accounts. And that's what those teachers use to purchase things for their classrooms. Extracurricular activities. Um, I do believe that Ms., I think it's Ms. Bobo, Ms. Torres. I'm not exactly sure. A couple of the teachers are doing, um, girls on the run. Again, I approved it the other day. Um, they're running two sessions of it, one in the fall and one in the spring. I don't know exactly when that starts. I don't know if they're on here, if they wanna speak to that or not. But I know they are uh, doing girls on the run. And I have asked uh, some of the other teachers uh, to do the hero boys. Um, I have not gotten any answer from the teachers on that. Um, that I have asked uh, for teacher sponsors for that. So those are a couple of things that they are, um, doing as far as extracurricular activities. And then I have a new teacher at the middle high campus who has asked if he can run um, every, so often run a basketball camp for the elementary kids. So I have told him, yes, after the school year gets started, he's gonna put a plan together. So we'll get that out to you also. Um, yes, you can send the dollar with your students, uh, in the classroom to their teachers. Hmm, what's girls on the run? Um, is, is Ms. Bobo, Ms. Torres, Ms. McKenzie, or any of you guys here? One of you unmute and answer that question? Crickets. Yes, they're not here. Alright, they'll send out a blast about it. They'll send out information about it. Make sure you're signed up for the school blast though. Um, will somebody from the district be there tomorrow to answer questions about lunches? I don't know. I'll text Ms. Robin, the cafeteria manager and see if, um, if she is available. Okay, Ms. Torres is gonna put something together for us to blast out. She's messaged why she can't talk. So, um, so as, I'll ask Ms. Robin if somebody's gonna attend for the, I'm sorry, I keep saying Ms. Torres and she got married. It's not Ms. Torres anymore. It's Ms. Bello. I apologize. Um, so oh, she's, there you go. She think, uh, girls on the run starts in September and we will be sending information soon. Okay. Alright, any other questions? Because there's no, okay, so the question is how come we don't have advanced classes for kids? Um, there's not a- advanced course codes in the, um, and the uh, cur- and the course code directory for elementary. We, we do, we have grouped them by their, you know, academic performance, um, that they're not advanced by definition, because that course code doesn't exist for elementaries. Any other questions? Um, our school doesn't have a gifted program. There are schools in the county that have gifted programs. Um, ours does not. We, to have a gifted program, you have to have a, enough students to, to create the program. Um, and I think we typically have schoolwide, like less than ten, and you would need to have like a cohort in a grade level, um, to have the, to have a whole program. We meet their needs as far as, you know, differentiation and challenging in the classroom. Um, our teachers, we have some teachers who are either gifted endorsed or working on their gifted endorsement, uh, that having an actual program. We don't have the, the um, population form. How do you give donations if you don't have time to volunteer? Um, you can watch for the text blasts and posts that say that they are, um, that this teacher's asking for this or that, or the school's looking for donations of whatever. Um, and those, that's the point at which you can make donations for that. Make sure you include your um, receipt with your name on it so that your, so the right family gets the volunteer credit. Okay, anything else? Alright, if you guys have any other questions, um, so this is, video is going to be, does that go for both campuses? Um, I assume you mean does the volunteering thing go for both campuses? If that's what you mean, yes, it does. Um, this video, when we, it, it is being read and, um, when we stop the video, the IT guys are gonna do magic. And it will become a link and we will, it will be posted to the school's YouTube page. And then we will post it on the school's Facebook page and it will be blasted out. Um, it's almost eight o'clock, so I don't know if it'll be blasted out tonight or tomorrow morning. Uh, but it will get blasted out. So for the families who were unable to attend tonight, um, or had to leave early, I saw some of those. Uh, or logged on late, um, you will, you will, um, be able to have access to this. And Amy, yes, I can do, if you wanna send it to me like on something else, like with a blast to post, I can do that. If I just send a random QR code, that might confuse people who were not here and don't know what it is. You are welcome. Thank you. We appreciate the, the feedback. Um, yes, I believe so. Ms. Hernandez, sun butter's acceptable, right? That's, that's nut free, right? I think I've heard that before.
Yes, sun butter's fine.
Okay. Alright. Alright, you guys have a great night.